We left aside item 7A-X, Joint Resolution with the Oklahoma City Economic Development Trust approving the allocation of GO bond proceeds in an amount of $1.7 million to provide job creation incentives for Job Creation Economic Development Agreement with Amazon.com Services, Inc. And again, it's my understanding we did not consider this item or here at presentation or anything, so we'll return to that now. And Jim, I believe you have a presentation from Brent Bryant?
We do.
Yes, sir. Yes, good morning, counsel. Today, I want to just go over some brief facts related to the Amazon project. For your review, start with the first one. The project's located at 9201 South Portland. Project Amazon will lease a 640,000-square-foot built-to-suit facility from a third party. The project requires a capital investment exceeding $140 million. That $140 million also includes $4.1 million worth of infrastructure, which I'll get into that on the next slide. As relates to jobs, Amazon currently has around 39 full-time jobs in Oklahoma City. They anticipate creating a total of 1,750 jobs at the site with annual payroll in excess of $45 million. Approximately 53 of those jobs will be full-time facility management positions, and Amazon has told us they have considered various sites in the Midwest and Southern states for this project. The key terms with Amazon include the creation of 53 new-to-market jobs at an average salary of around $60,000, investment of at least $40 million of private taxable investment, which includes facilities, equipment, and the public infrastructure. The city will provide up to $1.7 million in performance-based incentives. Incentive will be paid out over a three- to seven-year timeframe. This project, like I noted earlier, is for 1,750 jobs, but not all 1,750 jobs qualify for our program, and those 53 jobs do. And so, but as a result of incentivizing those 53 jobs, it will result in 1,697 new jobs with an average wage of between $12 and $14 an hour, with a $129 million economic impact in the first two years, and the estimated local sales and property taxes will exceed $4.8 million in five years. The process, I want to go through that. As we've mentioned before here, before this body, the Chamber of Commerce is kind of the gatekeeper of this program. They work with site selectors throughout the country and to try to recruit them to come to Oklahoma City. The chamber started working with representatives from Amazon back in November of 2017. They consulted with staff, along with Kathy O'Connor at the Alliance, and a recommendation of $1 million was recommended to the project. Subsequent to that, and that was based solely on 50 jobs at $60,000 and $140 million worth of taxable investment, Amazon requested, subsequent to that, Amazon requested assistance for the public infrastructure. If you're familiar with Lariat Landing, a few years ago, the airport came in and redid most of Portland, down to 104th. And what they needed to do was they're going to extend 89th Street from Portland to the west towards the airport. They're going to also need turn lanes, dedicated turn lanes, at that intersection of 89th and Portland. In addition to that, there's a decelerization lane that they anticipate they'll need on I-44 going south at 89th Street. And as a result of that, they're going to have to put traffic signals on both sides of I-44 along 89th Street. We asked for a list of all of those infrastructure requirements that they were seeking our help with. We worked with Public Works Director, the Assistant Public Works Director identified those, and as a result of that, we identified certain things that we believe were more regional, that we could help participate in. We identified about $1.4 million. It's roughly a few turn signals at 89th in Portland, and then the decelerization loan lane on I-44, along with the two traffic signals on both sides of the I-44. And what we did is we offered to pay for half of that. Back in 2012, this council, the Economic Development Trust, approved an amendment to the Strategic Investment Program to include funding for infrastructure. We formalized that, so we believe that fit within the program. The key thing on those $700,000, they still have to create the jobs. They will fund it upfront, and they will be paid as they create the jobs. And they have to do those certain improvements. If they don't do those improvements, they would not be provided the $700,000. So it's very important you know that. So, the process, subsequent to providing them the recommendation of $4 million, they did, when they made their final application, actually increased it to 53, but we did not change anything on the $1 million, and it stayed at $1 million. The next steps would be, with your approval today, would be the negotiation of an Economic Development Agreement based on these key terms that are provided to you. And then, the earliest we could bring that back to the trust would be June 26th, and then, or July 24th, and then subsequently, meetings with the city council. We anticipate them breaking ground next month, along with the completion in June of 2019. And we would not expect our first payment to them to occur until sometime in 2020. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
I have a question. The economic impact number that's always given here, is that a net impact or a gross impact? Basically, what I'm meaning is, are we taking into account net losses from, because, I mean, to say that there's just going to be 1,700 new people here having jobs, I mean, obviously, those people are going to be moving from another job. And so, do we count all of that?
It's a gross number.
It's a gross number, okay, good. And I have no problem with the $700,000, because that is them coming in, contributing to the public infrastructure, and we are contributing to it. The problem I do have is the million dollars. And generally, whenever I, whenever we talk about these jobs incentives, I don't like any of them. And that's why, whenever we went through the whole process to the bond project, that I voted against the Economic Development Package. As a councilman, I voted on it here, I voted against it as a citizen in the voting booth. And the main reason for that is because I don't think businesses create jobs because of the incentives. I think they create jobs because they need more workers to produce more products and to provide more services. And they get the incentives just because the incentives are there. But that's where I think the policy decision was made, was at the, whenever we were discussing the bond package. So the voters voted for it, and, which is why I voted in favor of the last two that were on the consent docket, because I think that, I think that those were aligned with how we should incentivize it based on, based on what we talked about. Just a few numbers. For CACI, we gave them $1.25 million for 550 jobs. That equates to $2,273 per job. Dura Coatings, we gave them $100,000 for 49 jobs. That equates to $2,041 per job. If you just take the million dollars and take that $700,000 out that we're proposing to give to Amazon, that equates to $18,863 per quality job. So, in the end, I'm probably going to vote for that unless something really changes my mind, but I'm probably going to vote against this, and that's the main reason why, is that I don't think that this aligns with the other two. And I know that it's because of the, because of the other investments that they're making, but all those are private investments that they have to make anyway when they come here. I mean, they aren't going to be able to run their business how they want to run it without doing those things. So, I really don't know why we're incentivizing that aspect of it, because that is a very short-term gain, that some other business could come in and do that as well. So, yeah, that's my view on it, and I'll be done now.
I think this is kind of a teachable pinata about everything that's wrong with the economic incentives. And I think that this particular incentive package is one of the worst to come before us. It is basically, to me, the Stockholm Syndrome of economic development, where we pay eight times our average allocation per job, that's 32,000 for these jobs if you include the infrastructure, versus an average on all the other projects of 4,000 per job. We pay our tormentors, those who have denied paying sales tax to us over the years and decades, those who have cost us retail jobs, those who are going to come in and cost us more retail jobs, hurt our small businesses here in Oklahoma City, and we are paying them to eat everybody's lunch. There are a myriad of problems, starting with, why did this, why so fast? Why are we hearing this today, 11 days after it was first publicized to the public, if it's not for the purpose of minimizing public discussion and public awareness about it? Until I ask for a deferral, right, you got a red-eye flight from Las Vegas because you and Kathy were at the shopping association meeting. There was not going to be you, or Kathy, or anyone from Amazon here today. Four days after the public heard about it, it was at the Economic Development Trust, 11 days we're here. The answer to Jim Roth at the Economic Development Trust about public transportation, "Amazon likes this site because of bus service," there isn't any bus service to this site, so we're currently negotiating how we're going to get bus service to this site, who's going to pay for it, are we going to have to, we'd have to, you know, why not have that negotiated? You know, are we going to have to increase, we'll have to increase the number of buses to get it to this site for these low-wage jobs? Why not have that sorted out first? Why so fast? I mean, we had to delay until David got here to even have enough people. Mark's not here, why so fast? The second thing is, why sign non-disclosure agreements? My understanding is that you were required to sign a non-disclosure agreement that not only didn't let you talk about it three or six months ahead of time. That I understand. If you have, you know, if you have a big company that comes in, you don't want people speculating on land and driving up land prices, or another city competing. But here, you had this going on the airport trust land, right? You're not going to have speculation, this is going on the airport trust. But your non-compete, what I heard you to say last week, is that it prohibited you from talking about this until it was released on the Economic Development Trust agenda that Friday afternoon. That, to me, is severe, far, far more than is required, and serves only to suppress public discussion and deliberation and involvement in the process. And that's why you, just two weeks ago, when I asked you, when you were talking about the Strategic Investment Program, I asked you, could this qualify? And you had to answer, I think that's something that might qualify, rather than, actually, two weeks from now, it's all going to be wrapped up. Two weeks from now, we're going to be right back, and it'll all be over. You couldn't answer that way because you had signed a non-disclosure. What would be wrong, that's a policy decision, right? That's the council allowing a city employee to sign a non-disclosure agreement that doesn't allow him to talk to anyone, including city council members, about it until four days before the vote. What would be wrong with the city council having a policy that you get this all wrapped up, you get the agreement made, and then there's a minimum of 30 days before it comes before the council? I mean, that, to me, just seems, if nothing else, an improvement in the process, because this is just too fast, and these non-disclosure agreements are too extreme, and they serve only to protect these corporations from public scrutiny, which has markedly increased because Amazon has done this over and over and over throughout the country. And Good Jobs First did a study in late 2016, and their efforts towards secrecy have increased after that study. In terms of the merits of the award, it is clear that their business model originally was to locate these warehouses in select places where they didn't have to pay taxes. So they didn't create a nexus where they had enough of a physical presence to have to pay sales tax. Then, as that started to change, and states like Texas went after them, and they started to have to pay sales tax, they moved into the prime business model, which is where, at a loss, they deliver services the same day, next day, or even the same day. You cannot do that unless you have a physical presence in every major market. So what we're seeing is Amazon creating these fulfillment centers in every major metropolitan area in the United States. They build it not in the zip codes where you have the highest incomes, but right next to them, and at airports. They're building an air hub in Louisville, they are building, they are going to try and compete with delivery, with UPS, FedEx, eventually. So they have to be at the airport and near high-income zip codes, which is exactly what they're doing here. They are going to do this no matter what, they are, where, this idea that they proposed it to other states and cities around us, they're already doing it. They're already doing it in Dallas, in Tulsa. Where are they going to go? If they don't go here, where are they going to go to get same-day delivery to the people of Oklahoma City, the 1.5 million people in the metro area? Actually, each one of these fulfillment centers, we learned at the Economic Development Trust, has a 100-mile radius, so they service a 100-mile area. So you do Tulsa, you do here, you're done for Oklahoma. But you have to do it here, and you have to do it near the airport. And you have to do it for this business model, whether we pay them anything or not. One out of 10 jobs are retail jobs, but it only takes Amazon 50% of the number of people to deliver, distribute those goods. So you will see, as, Amazon doesn't want to dominate the marketplace, they want to be the marketplace. They want commerce to go through Amazon, and they're already halfway there online. One out of every $2 spent online goes through Amazon. 50% of all online searches begin and end on Amazon. 90% of small businesses, in a survey of more than 850 small businesses, feel their small business is being negatively, adversely impacted by Amazon, and they're being forced to go on the Amazon website to do business. Harvard Business School study says that then, what they do, Amazon does with their algorithms, you have to rise up the algorithms for people to see you, is that as you start to sell goods and do well, Amazon then starts to sell the same goods against you. Amazon then starts to punish you with higher and higher fees. Amazon is competing against our small businesses in so many different ways that we can and cannot appreciate at this time. They are hurting our local small businesses, they are hurting employment, they are going to decrease the number of retail jobs, which is 10% of all jobs, and we're paying them to do it. If they're going to do it, if this is what the market is going to bring to us, and Amazon is going to do then, let them do it. But why are we going to go borrow money, borrow money, and pay interest on that for 20 years to then pay them to eat everybody's lunch? It's one thing if they do it on their own, it's another thing for us to pay them to do it to our people and our businesses, which they are going to cost us. This is going to hurt us jobs, Brent. And I just don't see the evidence-based public policymaking, I didn't see it in the Economic Development Trust meeting, I didn't see the kind of questions that Amazon needs to answer in front of us, he needs to be here, he's a bully, he's calling Economic Development Trust members, and Larry's words, saying, "You need to shut your mouth," or "Keep your mouth quiet," I think he said. "Keep your mouth shut," is what Larry said. Keep your mouth shut. Keep your mouth shut.
That was a summation of what he said. He said it very diplomatically and politely, so that cannot be used against him.
He's also calling the mayor's office. David hasn't even been elected, he doesn't even know that there's an Amazon incentive telling, you know, threat with heavy-handed language, saying, "You need to keep this quiet." It is heavy-handed, it is extreme, and it is, it's going, it's going to hurt us. Estimates are 150,000 jobs have already been lost by 2015 from the dominance of Amazon in the marketplace. I don't expect to win, I don't expect, you know, I expect that we're going to rubber-stamp this, not rubber-stamp, we're going to pass it, but all I'm asking, I'm asking a few things, is the process be improved, right? That it needs to slow down, there needs to be more public awareness, we need to change the non-disclosure agreements, we need diversity of thought on these Economic Development Trusts. Diversity is not just about ethnicities, or gender, or sexual orientation, it's also about diversity of thought. And we don't have it right now. And that's, now we have an opening on the Economic Development Trust, right? You've got four lockdown votes on the Economic Development Trust, right? So now you have an opening. I'm not, I get it, I'm, I can be abrasive, the supermajority of the council thinks I'm an ass. You're partially right, right? At least, okay? So, I'm not, but James, Todd, they have a diversity of thought, they're not abrasive. We need more, we need diversity of thought on that trust, we need people asking these corporations tougher questions, right? Asking them, how, you know, how, what is the net loss of jobs here? What is the net impact on jobs? Not just considering these things in a vacuum, Brent. Not just considering the economic impact in a vacuum, but also trying to figure out what it's going to do to our existing businesses, and figuring out what the net economic impact is, what the net impact on jobs is. And those are the kind of questions we need to ask, we're not asking, and we need to ask them earlier in the process. Thanks.
I don't know if there was, there was a lot, in fact, there was anything you actually wanted him to answer?
No.
Okay. Councilman Greenwood?
Yes, thank you. Councilman Shadie, I don't think that's a true statement about us, our thoughts about you. I welcome your different views, and I think most members of the council do, so I would encourage you to continue. Now, I have to be careful, because I'll get just as excited as you did, but in a positive way towards this. But let me ask one question. So, of the 1.7 million incentive that we're offering, 1 million will go towards, quote, "infrastructure," such as traffic signals?
$700,000.
Okay, and so the million goes towards an incentive to reimburse them for the...
Pay for performance job incentives.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay, well, let me make this statement. That's $700,000, as far as infrastructure means, that we'll pay the other half.
They're actually putting 4.1 million, the total package is $4.1 million. We agreed to participate in 1.4 million of that, and our share of that is $700,000.
Okay, here's my complaint. We needed those infrastructure a long time ago, out there in Ward 5, and a little bit in Ward 3. It took Amazon to come out there to finally get these infrastructures, just like a mile further south, it required Walmart to come in there, for them to put in over $2 million of infrastructure to get traffic signals put in, which long ago needed it. So, I'm seeing it from a positive perspective. The one problem that we had with Lariat Landing, and we still have it, is the connection of I-240 and I-44. It's a complex intersection. And if we could somehow redesign that, and we might talk to Amazon before too long about them contributing to restructuring that intersection, because it's hard for traffic coming in from the east on I-240 to get over there to where Lariat Landing is going to be. And the curve on I-44, as you intersect 240, makes it difficult. So I understand the need for this decelerization lane heading towards 89th Street, we need it. This is going to explode the development of Lariat Landing. It's going to continue to enhance Oklahoma City Community College, which is just a mile east of the proposed plant. There's a bus system already going to Community College. We will put in, hopefully, more sidewalks. Where's Eric? We need more sidewalks along 89th and 104th Street. These kinds of developments is just going to enhance the area. It's going to create, I guarantee you, and I'll bet on this, five years from now, that whole area is going to be substantially more developed than it is now as a result of these new jobs. And $45 million of new payroll coming into the market. Ed, I know you're a proponent of increasing the minimum wage, we don't need that. When we see all these new jobs coming in, these employers are going to have to begin increasing wages to compete for the employees. And I suspect they'll soon work with either the, I still want to call them the VOTEC systems, or Oklahoma City Community College, which will become their next-door neighbor in offering scholarship programs, training specifically for their employees. I see this as a win. I am so grateful that this is occurring, and it's in a great location. When we can tell potential new companies looking at Oklahoma, well, sure, we've got Amazon right here, doesn't everybody? It'll help sell the Oklahoma City market, and in particular, the airport, and that's a critical area, the aerospace industry is a high priority for the state. And now, all of a sudden, you know, Amazon, on a positive perspective, made over $3 billion in 2017, $3 billion, $33 million. Now we get to draw that into the state of Oklahoma. And while they've got space, the fact that they're going to add, how many thousand square feet?
640,000.
Yeah. We get a larger share of that $3.3 billion, subject to taxation, for the entire state. That's going to help the entire state now getting to draw their net income and subject to Oklahoma taxation. This is very positive. I think the return on this investment is underestimated based upon these numbers. I think it'll be tremendous. It'll be great.
I agree that this, that Amazon coming here will be positive. I just don't think that, I just don't think a million-dollar incentive is going to make the deal happen. And which is why, if we move this incentive down to something that's more comparable to the other things based solely on the jobs, you know, in the $100,000 to $200,000 range, I wouldn't have any, I wouldn't have any problem with it. I just think that this is inflated, and it's not needed.
Okay. I disagree with that. And if any of the reasons why we're upset with Amazon is because they're so profitable, then aren't we demonstrating a sign of discrimination? You know, like, we don't want to help, or we're not going to provide the same services because you make too much money. If we take that, where does that end? If it's, if it meets the requirements of the terms of the Economic Development Council, no questions asked, it meets the requirements, we need to provide that. If we're saying, no, we think they've made too much money on their own, then where does that stop? Do we then start saying, "We're no longer going to provide police and fire protection because you made too much money? We're going to make you, you know, obtain your own private security."
I actually see this as discriminating in the opposite direction, that it's actually, that we're not being equitable to other, to the, it's not the same incentive. And I understand that those private investment dollars get thrown in there, which I don't know why that, I don't know why those get thrown in there. But it, so I see it as actually the opposite of, but I agree that we shouldn't be discriminating based on income or based on profitability.
Right. And I would say this, James, we are going to get so much more return on this investment than we could with any smaller-type business. Granted, they may have greater needs for funding, that's the life of small businesses and new startups. But from just purely an investment standpoint, we will reap so much greater investment by working with Amazon. And Ed, all the points that you made are actually true. Amazon has figured out how to compete in today's business environment. They took advantage of the growth and development of technology. Other companies are going to have to also. And speaking of loss of jobs in the retail market, that's going to continue as companies like Amazon make it much more easier for us to order things from our office or our home via the internet. If we want to do away with the internet, that's a different discussion. I mean, there's good and bad points to that, but it's just the way things are now. It's impacting the oil and gas industry. There are so many losses of very gifted people who have been working in the oil and gas industry, but due to growth in technology, the development of technology... industry, but due to growth in technology, the development of technology, they don't need as many people identifying where the oil and natural gas is located, how to drill to it to make it, produce it more economically and more efficiently, and then the process of drilling itself, and then the production. Technology is going to continue to reduce the number of people, but at the same time, new technology creates new opportunity, new jobs, and those who are willing to stay in school, get a good education, are going to benefit tremendously by this, is my point. Thank you.
I just have a couple of comments, most of which have already been said, but Ed, I want to, first of all, say thank you for sending all those articles. I read them all, I appreciated getting the email, I think there were a lot of good facts in there, and it's helpful, you know, as we go through these discussions, so I was glad to get those. But just a couple of random thoughts. We're talking about the number of jobs that are being created, and the ones we're incenting are 50, but there are another 1,600 jobs. And I just want to tell you all a very quick story. I was at Westminster School last week, working with their eighth-grade class who spent a year studying poverty and all different aspects of it, and they worked, created a partnership recently with the Curbside Chronicle, I won't go through the whole details, but they actually created the program to sell Mother's Day flowers, and they took $12,000 that the students had earned in their seventh-grade businesses and turned it into $35,000. Another part of this class's program was to look at livable wages and ask private businesses to join a program called Wage Up, where they would guarantee that they would pay at least $12 an hour. These jobs are $12 to $14 an hour jobs in addition to the higher-wage jobs. So, we're not looking at substandard or non-livable wage in the rest of these jobs, even though they're not being incentivized, so that's one thing. You know, we talk about the services that they're going to be providing, these are what our citizens are demanding. People want immediate delivery of things that they're ordering on Prime, and I think to be able to have that operation here in Oklahoma City speaks a lot, following the kinds of things that David said. I, so, just a comment about Lariat Landing. We made a huge investment in that facility through the Airport Trust, and this is exactly what it was designed to do. You know, we got an aircraft facility business coming over there, and to attract Amazon to that location, again, following what David said, I think in five years, we're not going to recognize what Lariat Landing looks like, and that was a policy goal that was set by this council through our support of the Airport Trust's development. And I think, lastly, I just want to say that since we've been having this conversation, I'm sure all of us have been talking to citizens and asking how they feel about this idea. And every person I've spoken to, and they're not just my inner circle, people in public places where I've asked, the response back to me was, jobs are number one. It's jobs that we're looking for, and they were supportive of this level of investment. So, for that reason, I'm going to vote for it.
Just a couple of comments. Ed, thank you for that material. Ed has some material that the, I think, has already alluded to. That material is put together to prove a point, and the point that they're trying to prove in there, that incentives, especially to Amazon, are not the best way to go. There are two schools of thought. One says you should incentivize to move forward, another school of thought says incentives are bad and should not be used. The marketplace is moving towards incentives as an important part of being competitive, and therefore, that's why our gold bond program was put together, to provide resources to incentivize those jobs, which would bring greater value to Oklahoma City than the cost of the incentive itself. When you apply that logic to this particular opportunity, it comes out that, yes, this is a good deal. One of the things I think we have neglected to do, usually in the incentivization of a new company coming in, we focus on jobs created, and we don't spend a whole lot of time looking at what happens from the investment in infrastructure that the company makes to move in here. When you apply that to the factors of the number of jobs at 53 that do qualify, you see that this has a tremendous economic benefit to the area. And so, I think we've been a little short-sighted sometimes in not stressing the infrastructure, the equipment, and the things that the company invests in there. And the other thing, we talked about Lariat Landing, if you want to see a beautiful wheat field that lays dormant most of the time, look at the current site on the Airport Trust land that this facility is going to take up. It's going to turn some agricultural land on the airport into a dynamic generator of economic opportunity, with a lot of opportunity to partner with OCCC. You have bus service already going there, you have roadways already going in there. There's one thing you need to keep in mind, you may or may not know, the Turnpike Authority and ODOT is already looking at where their next expansion of the interstate system is going to be, now that they've got that loop going from out by Yukon to the airport that's in construction right now. There are already meetings going on about what to do with that stretch of land that you're talking about on I-44 that is so congested, and so this will fit right in with that, and you'll see some new highways coming from the state because of this study that's going on right now. Thank you, Your Honor.
Any further questions for Brent or discussion? You know, I think I'd just add that I yield, I do not yield to the councilmen from words one or two in my hatred of incentives, but it is the game that cities are forced to play, and we want those jobs, and I have a really hard time walking away from them. And the voters, I think, obviously, have a similar view. They have twice approved this program by a vote of the people, you know, and I think we have an obligation to carry out their wishes, hopefully as wisely and as thoughtfully as possible. And I think one other thing that's worth piggybacking on, something that Councilman McAtee said, was that, and the city manager just came up with this calculation, that Amazon will spend $2.9 million in sales tax building their facility in our city limits, which, you know, Councilman Shadid, I think, is somewhat compelling in his argument that their business model dictates a facility in the Oklahoma City metro, but it did not necessarily, although we'll never know, dictate a facility within our city limits, but we will benefit from $2.9 million in sales tax because of that facility. And I'm just talking about the construction costs of the almost $200 million, is that correct?
$140,000.
$140,000 facility. So, that is worth noting as well. But I do think, you know, I have enough discomfort with some of the aspects of this particular process to take some things to heart that Councilman Shadid said, including, you know, giving careful consideration to the appointment that I now have for the Economic Development Trust, as well as, you know, trying to get involved in the process earlier. You know, I didn't know about this, I knew vaguely of the project for some time, but I didn't know anything about the incentives until recent days, and that's just by nature of me just having taken office. But, you know, I think all of that is, are things that I'll definitely pay attention to in the future and consider, some of the things you said about non-disclosures and the other ways that we've run these things. I understand that, again, that's all part of the game as well with these companies, but that doesn't mean we can't try to assert our own terms in some regards. So, those are just a few thoughts, and I thank everybody for a very healthy discussion. I don't know that we have a motion or a second yet. We have a motion? A second? Second from Councilman Stone. Is there any further, any further questions or discussion? Seeing none, we will, this is item 7AX, and we obviously pulled it out of the consent docket earlier, and we will now cast our votes on it individually. Cast your votes. Passes 5 to 2.